Okay. If I can have your attention, it's 5:30, so we're gonna call the January meeting to order. And the first item up is Mr. Oliver over here is going to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. If you will please stand.
(Inaudible)
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 Thanks, Book. Our mission statement tonight will be read by Terry Draper.
(Inaudible) County Schools will provide quality educational programs and services to ensure student academic and vocational success.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight? No one? Okay, so we'll move straight to approval of the agenda. Anything need to be added? Everybody look over. Is it okay? A motion? Move through.
(Inaudible)
Okay, got a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Approval of the board minutes, and I think there's four sets on here, I believe, and I'm sure you've had time to look over those. So, what's the pleasure?
(Inaudible)
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. And that's gonna carry us into our pub-- yeah, our public recognition. And tonight, that will be Ms. Carolyn Walker and Nicole will be doing it together.
For this meeting, we will be recognizing both our December as well as our January character education winners. In the month of December, the character trait that was recognized is gratitude, and our gifts for our winners were sponsored by Fish Hooks of Belle Haven. At the elementary level, the nominees were from Chaco Winnie to Middle Maya Bryant, from Chaco Winnie to Primary Rayquan Blunt, from Eastern Elementary Shaheen Person, from John Cotton Taylor Emily Lopez Chavez, from John Small Kennedy Ross from Northeast Elementary, Jasmine Sanchez Garcia, and from S.W. Snowden Dana Morgan. And the winner at the elementary level was Rayquan Blunt from Chaco Winnie Primary. He will come forward.
(Applause)
Turn around so they can get your pretty face or your handsome face on there.
Rayquan is a third grader at Chaco Winnie Primary. His mother is Ms. Sharon Hopkins, if she will stand. And when she-- he was presented by his teacher, Ms. Rhonda Godley, if she will stand as well. Okay. And Ms. Godley wrote, "Rayquan Blunt is one of those special students you love to see coming through the door each day. He never misses the chance to say thank you or please. Just the other day, I spent a few minutes with him to discuss a new method of subtracting. Later that day, he came to me and said, 'I just wanted to thank you for helping me with my math.' How sweet was that? When playing a game, many students want to know what they will get if they win. Rayquan is quick to remind them that they-- that being able to play a game is a reward enough. His grateful nature shines not only with his teachers, but also with his classmates. Any little thing another student does for him is rewarded with a heartfelt thanks. For these reasons, I am proud to nominate Rayquan Blunt for this month's character trait gratitude. He has certainly earned it." We say congratulations.
(Applause)
All right, Rayquan. We've got a gift for you here. There's all kinds of goodies in the back. There's a gift certificate to get in the front. You might wanna give that tomorrow. But on behalf of the Beaufort County School Board, we are very grateful and show our gratitude for you for being such an upstanding young man, and I hope you continue to do that and show others how in school. And right now, I'd like you to go around here and shake each board member's hand.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm so proud of you. Great job.
Good job. That would be nice. Good job. Good job.
At the middle school level, the nominees were from Chaco Winnie to Middle Erin Perkins, from Northeast Elementary Brittany Bell, from P.S. Jones Serena Ramirez Palacios, and from S.W. Snowden Daniel Harold. And the winner at the middle school level was Serena Ramirez Palacios from P.S. Jones, if she will come forward. (Applause) And Serena is an eighth grader at P.S. Jones. Her mother is Paula Ramirez Palacios, if she will stand. And she was presented by Mr. Grant Jenkins, if he's present, he will stand. And he wrote, "There is no student of whom I have taught who better exemplifies gratitude as a character trait than Serena. Every act which she views as a kindness is returned in kind. The examples I have seen in the two different years I have taught her are innumerable, but I shall make an attempt to list them. Giving me a handmade birthday card along with homemade tamales in which she thanks me for helping her throughout these two years in my class, saying thank you whenever she receives something from either teachers or students. Graciously thanking me for giving her a Wonder Woman, her favorite character doll, from my classroom. Volunteering to help clean up the room in cafeteria, and eagerly volunteering to help other students without any need or expectation of reward. It is my sincerest hope that Serena will be recognized for her continual and sincere gratitude which she shows to everyone around her." We say congratulations.
(Applause) And Serena, we also have some goodies, and your certificate and your gift card is in there. I'm gonna have you do like Rayquan, and if he'll go to the-- all the way and shake your hand while you turn the other side. And just so you know, he's walked away last tamales too.
Congratulations.
(Laughter)
Congratulations.
(Inaudible)
Good job.
Congratulations.
At the high school level, the nominees were from Northside High School Haley Burbage, from Washington High School Armando Benitez, and from Southside High School Shakira Daniels. And the winner at the high school level was Armando Benitez from Washington High School, if he will come forward. (Applause) Armando is a 12th grader at Washington High School. His parents are-- or his guardians are Maria and Fidi? Fidi Benitez, if they will stand. And he was presented by his teacher, Ms. Beth Pippen, and she will stand as well. It says, "Armando has just moved to North Carolina. He is here with his sister and other family members, but away from his parents. Armando has had a hearing impairment and facial numbness since birth. He doesn't let this hold him back. He is friendly, polite, outgoing, and grateful. He truly has an attitude of gratitude. He always thanks me for helping him and does it with a smile. His sister told me that when he got his first paycheck from McDonald's, he sent half back to his father, and with the other half, he purchased household supplies like toilet paper and paper towels. My heart almost exploded when I heard this. What teenager spends his first paycheck not on himself? I know Armando is thankful to be in North Carolina. That is not to say that he doesn't miss his mom and dad, or that being the new kid hasn't been hard, but I've never heard him complain. I've never seen a sad look on his face. He is a great example of making the best of his situation." We say congratulations.
(Applause) On behalf of the Beaufort County Board of Education, we want to show our gratitude to all that you're doing to set an example for other students. We appreciate what you're doing. If you wanna go and shake the board member's hand?
Congratulations.
(Inaudible)
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 And it looks like it's easy.
For the month of January, the character trait that was recognized is self-discipline. And the prizes for the month of January were sponsored by East Coast Wings of Washington. And the nominees at the elementary level were from Bath Elementary Peyton Cooper, from Chaco Winnie to Middle Michael Allen Gerard, from Chaco Winnie to Primary Nathaniel Eagles, from Eastern Elementary Jenny Yuzel, from John Small Uriel Marquez, from Northeast Elementary Haley Potter. And the winner is Haley Potter from Northeast Elementary. She will come forward.
(Applause) So, they give you the chance.
Haley is a third grader at Northeast Elementary. Her mother is Ms. Sally Potter, if she will stand. And she was presented by Ms. Anita Rayburn, if she's here, she will stand. And Mr. Rayburn said the following, "Haley is a hard worker and is very self-disciplined. School doesn't always come easy to Haley, but she works harder than anyone I know. She does routine tasks before she's asked to. She is very conscious about completing her work and doing it correctly. Also, if she doesn't understand the concept, she will work continuously and in different ways until she achieves the task. She does a lot of reading and writing in her spare time to help her fluency in this subject. Haley is very self-disciplined and is a pleasure to teach." We say congratulations to Haley.
(Applause) We've got a bag of goodies and your certificate, and your gift card to East Coast Wings is in there. If you would take this opportunity to go by and let the board congratulate you, and I'll get your name out of the way.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) Forgot to tell you how much I love you boys. If you wanna have a seat, then we'll call you back up.
At the middle school level, the nominees were from Bath Elementary Gustavo De Leon, from Chaco Winnie to Middle Sean Gerard, from Northeast Elementary Grace De Hoog, and from P.S. Jones Middle School Anna Robertson. And the winner from P.S. Jones Middle School Anna Robertson, she will come forward. (Applause) Anna is a sixth grader at P.S. Jones. Her parents are Kelly and Stacy Robertson, if they will stand. And she was presented-- she was actually nominated twice by her teachers Dawn Landon and Mrs. Krantz. All right? And we combined this as much as we could. It says, "Could you read 27 books in three months? Not picture books, but lengthy fiction and non-fiction selections on an advanced middle school reading list that includes novels that, let's just say, can be considered very challenging to an 11-year-old. Well, sixth grader Anna Robertson did just that. She devoured every book on the 2016-17 Battle of the Books list in less than three months. The list includes classics such as To Kelly Mockingbird, to new releases such as I Am Malaya. All the books have over 200 pages and are challenging. She didn't just read them, she comprehended them. Anna is able to answer any question regarding those books, as well as name the author of each one. She-- since she is a sixth grader, she joined the group in late September, well after the group initially got together and began reading in April. And the other teacher wrote, "In a world where self-discipline seems to be more of a rarity than a normality, there is a student in my class who exhibits self-discipline more than any other student I've ever seen before." This student is Anna Robertson. Anna sets lofty goals and accomplishes them with hard work and perseverance. Another example of how Anna has shown self-discipline was during the sixth grade spelling bee. She was the winner for my class, and in preparation to compete against the students from the other language arts classes, she memorized a list of 100 challenging spelling words. For the next few days, she studied the words and even had her parents and friends quiz her on them. Needless to say, she won the sixth grade spelling bee and will be representing the sixth grade in the school-wide spelling bee. I believe the number-one trait needed to accomplish goals is self-discipline. Anna has more than enough of it. These were just two of the many examples I could have shared about Anna and how she exhibits self-discipline on a daily basis in the classroom. Anna is successful because of her drive and self-discipline, both of which will take her very far in life."
(Applause) Anna, on behalf of the Beaufort County School Board, we want to thank you. (Inaudible) What a great job you have done. And here, we've got some goodies, and your gift certificate is in the front. If you would, go around and shake the board's hand.
Congratulations. Keep up your work. Great job.
(Inaudible)
At the high school level, the nominees were Brayden Cooper from Northside High School and Jasmine Speller from Southside High School. And the winner was Jasmine Speller from Southside High School, she will come forward. Jasmine is an 11th grader at Southside High School. Her mother is Ms. Tamerica Miller, if she will stand. And she was presented by her teacher, Ms. Tina Petty, if she's here, she will stand as well. And she wrote, "My nomination for the character trait of self-discipline is Jasmine Speller. Jasmine is taking my honors statistics class this semester and quickly learned that it was not a normal math class. Her grades were lower than she was used to, and she wanted to drop the class so it wouldn't lower her GPA. When she found out it was too late to drop the class, she started studying for the class, and she spent hours on Khan Academy to raise her grade. As a result, Jasmine has increased her second nine weeks' grade by 10 points from the first nine weeks, and has completed the entire Khan Academy course for statistics. I am so proud of Jasmine for stepping up to the challenge and working harder instead of giving up or settling for less than she was capable of. You will go far in life, Jasmine, with this self-discipline." We say congratulations.
(Applause) Jasmine, on behalf of the Beaufort County School Board, not only do we want to present you with these goodies and the gift certificate, but I want to thank you for your hard work and self-discipline that speaks of your character, and we're so proud of you. If you will go around and shake your hands. Would the other-- the other two want to take a picture?
Congratulations.
And you said college off. Thank you.
(Inaudible)
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 We want to congratulate all the award winners once again, and we want to thank all the parents and teachers for coming out tonight and sharing this with us. This is one of our favorite times of the meeting. Especially if you stayed and saw the rest of the meeting, you would understand why. But if you came just for the awards part, you're welcome to leave now. We'll take a small pause before we enter into business portion, which you're welcome to stay. But we understand. This is usually when the room clears, we understand. (Inaudible) But thank you again for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, Terry? Can't get them to stay.
No.
(Inaudible)
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 Might have one taper.
(Inaudible)
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 She's the lady in the red wind suit.
Run catcher, Stan. Run.
Can't go far, Stan has her keys.
Won't be hard to catch it with a mark. Okay, we're gonna transition over into the no-action portion of the meeting. And the first item up, I see some transcripts that I guess Mark Don would like to explain something to us about.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to give the board an update. We're working our-- we have our copier contract with Toshiba, and part of that also involves scanning of certain documents. We work with different companies to do different scanning, but Scribbles Company is a subset of Toshiba. They scan our documents for Human Resources, scan some of our transcripts and things like that. What we're moving to right now, all of our transcripts, some of them are electronic, some of them are paper, some of them are still on microfiche, depending on how long ago you graduated from Beaufort County Schools, or even previous to when there were two separate school systems. And there-- we don't have the ability to have anyone order those transcripts online. That's what we're moving to. So that we'll have an opportunity for folks to order transcripts online. They can go online, they'll be able to order transcripts from the central office, depending on when you graduated, or from the regular high schools, if you've graduated within the last three years. We also get requests for employment verification, graduation date, immunization records, birth certificates, all types of forms and parts of cumulative records from the past. And what we'll transition to is folks being able to order those online, as opposed to having to come in in person and do those. The fee that we set along was $5 for a transcript. The company-- there's a $3 processing fee that's included in that five. So, Beaufort County Schools would see $2, and the company would see $3. The company doesn't charge us anything, it's set up the website, they take care, you pay online, so we don't have to worry about receiving money. And we still have the option, if people walk in, we can still work with those folks at the school level and at central office level, but our goal eventually would be to get away from walk-ins altogether and go strictly online. But that doesn't mean we still can't do those. So, we'll be working-- first step is just to start getting training with all of our guidance counselors and all the folks at the school level, with Melita Bullock here, just to go through how the website works up. They'll set up the website, they'll specify it to our requests. That way, it'll be routed to the right person, so when you say when you graduated, if it was last year, it'll go straight to your high school. If you say it was 10 years ago, then Melita will get an email. And then you-- there are security measures online, so you have to identify yourself in a certain way, to make sure that you're ordering your own transcripts, there are questions you have to answer. You can also set up a password, so you can track it. We can electronically send your transcript straight to a university, so there's no middle man, it doesn't have to come to you, and you take them. We can go straight to the university electronically. So, should speed up. Not-- we don't have a huge issue with time, but it will help folks-- I see Melita usually, right before community college starts, there's a frantic grab of the day of class. People come in, and so we can expedite that a little bit with those folks.
Okay.
We're just getting in the beginning stages, but just want to make you all aware.
Anybody have any questions, Mark, about that?
Now, current students still get theirs from their high school?
That's correct. And current students-- and our current students who are in high school right now can go through College Foundation North Carolina and sign up and get free transcripts. So, they don't have to buy them or order them. These are-- when they graduate, I mean, current students can, you know, as long as they keep that account active, even after they graduate, it's my understanding, they can have access to it. So, you know, in theory, if every student signed up for CFNC, we would be out of transcript business altogether on down the road. It would take years to get there, but that's good for them, because it's free. So, I'm all for that, if we can get everybody registered.
I think it's important to keep our guidance offices, our counselors, reminding these students over and over and over that that is the free option.
There's tons of information on CFNC, from financial aid to college planning to transcripts, so absolutely.
So, I guess there'll be a link on the Beaufort County Schools website that they go to and it'll take--
Now, there's a link there that you can download the form, and you would then either bring it in person, or-- but we'll substitute that with a new web link.
Okay. But you'll just give us a buzz as it moves forward?
Absolutely. Next thing, start training folks.
Nothing we need to act on anyway, so.
No, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Policy, must have a policy update getting ready to take place here, Mr. Phillips.
Yes, if you take a look at the attachment, it's Policy 6323. We've talked about this through the years quite a bit. It's our policy on the use of activity buses. And the issue that's come up at least three times in my tenure here is when students are involved with throwing something off the bus, and what happens? And the policy that currently states that a student who throws an item off a bus, including paper or gum, will be banned from athletic or extracurricular participation for 365 days. And the conversation that we've had is that we need to look at these situations on a case-by-case basis and have the consequences match the infraction. And what I wanted to do was to ask you to consider-- and again, this sits on the table for a month, but I wanted to have it in writing for you to take a look at, and we'll also seek some feedback from the public and from our principals and others who may have some opinions. But Number 12 would be stricken, as you see there, and the new Number 12 would be just a rule that we shouldn't have to state it, but we need to state it. It says that students may not throw any object on the bus for safety reasons. We don't want that to happen. Number 13 would be that students may not throw any object from the bus, and that throwing objects out of the bus constitutes littering and may cause property damage and/or personal injury. And then Number 14 gives a little bit more of a range for a principal to be able to take a look at the situation and apply the appropriate consequences. It says if a student does not follow rules on the bus, could be any of those, the student will be disciplined according to the Code of Student Conduct. Depending on the nature and frequency of the misconduct, the student may be suspended or prohibited from participating in extracurricular activities for a period up to 365 days. So, this gives the same penalty that was there if it's needed, but it allows the principal to do less if they feel like it's needed, and it puts the ball on the principal's court in terms of making that determination. I will tell you, we have some principals that would prefer to have a spelled-out response, but what we try to do in our policy is to leave it broad, so that they have the ability to go in and apply the consequences as they see fit. So, again, this is not for action tonight, but this was trying to put something on paper with some suggested wording, and then we'll ask for feedback and come back to you in a month to ask you for approval.
That's the changing from will-be to may-be.
That's right.
Makes a big difference. And I'm sure you're right. Some principals would like the will-be, some would rather have the may-be. So, I'm gonna give it to you. I see we have one principal sat here looking, so we'll just leave it up to that. Makes sense to me. Any questions? It's just a first reading, is what this is.
Do we have a policy similar to this for yellow buses?
There's a bus policy. I don't-- I need to pull that up, take a look at, making sure that the wording and everything is consistent with that. We had-- and here, we had student athlete, and we felt like it was unfair to single out student athletes, because it could have been a field trip to the planetarium, and we may have a student that misbehaved. So, this would not apply only to athletes, but any of our students who were on those buses.
Any other questions? Okay, we got a month to read over. If you've got one, let Don know about it. Let him know, question. Okay, we'll move into action, and I see a contract extension for, and I believe maybe Mr. Carolyn, our new finance director, might be able to explain that?
Yes, we've been working with the auditor over the last couple of weeks, trying to finalize the 2016 audit. Your contract currently says it goes through December the 31st. Since we have not finalized the last two items, which should be finalized tomorrow, we need to extend their contract to January the 31st. It requires board action and the chairman's signature.
Okay. Move through.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any other discussion quickly on this?
Is any additional funds related to extending their contract?
Yes, sir.
Just to cover ourselves. Okay, any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, just get that-- and I'll sign before I leave, I guess, if you have it. Capital budget update, and Mr. Hudson, we got a couple people hobbling around tonight.
I don't know much of you.
Yeah, what's been going on at the schools these days?
Good afternoon. I have one item to present to y'all tonight is for approval, would be the addition of a heating and air-conditioning unit for the central office restrooms here. We sent out bid number 65 out to the general public. We received three bids back from three local contractors for the installation of a Dykens mini splint wall-mounted unit with two inside Dyke and wall-mounted remote control cooling and heating units to go into bathroom that would take the place of the existing boiler units to go into bathroom that would take the place of the existing boiler that we have here that would put every room on electric heat and reheat. And we could do away with the boiler, save some funds and gain some additional storage and get rid of a costly piece of equipment outside. The budget for this project was $6,000 and it came in Robertson Heating and Air of Washington for $5,125.
And of three, that's the one you're?
Yes, sir. That's the lowest bid and compatible bid. We spec Dykens and that's what all three bid was Dykens. So, and the reason we're staying with Dykens, that's what we started with at Eastern and we figured we'd stay with the same units being we've got great service out of them so far.
And no troubles, right?
Yes, sir.
Where the other?
Excuse me?
Other people being, where they from? Were they local?
Yes, ma'am. All three were local. All three Washington. Yep.
All the specs, everything good.
Some of them's changed.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. And did you see that on there, Carolyn? She was just mentioning where they in Washington. I know they got a Williamson, but they also got Office Hill 15th Street.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, I know they are, because I've used them a few times, I think.
And they live, they live it too.
Yeah, they do good work. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to that? Okay. I don't really have any notes for you tonight like I usually do. I can come up with some if you give me a few minutes.
I'll answer.
Anybody have any other questions for Stan before he slips out on us?
Last year's capital budget, we talked about it. We had some items that were put off because they were either over budget or whatever. And I know there was supposed to be some funds left over after the Eastern work. Can we come back next month and look at that?
Certainly. We started working on it.
Can you speak, is there any news? We were waiting to see what some of the capital fund balance numbers were because there are some projects out there. There's a larger project also for cooling towers at Washington High School.
And the projects that we put on hold, we've already, the commissioners have endorsed those and approved them. We'd want to look at them again and look at them as a priority, but also the cooling towers at Washington with the chillers that we put in, we're not getting the efficiency and we're concerned about, are we cutting the livelihood of the longevity of that unit down by not putting that in? So we'll come back with you. We've got costs and all that, but Willamak, was it $290,000?
Yes, sir.
They've done a lot of work going through trying to make sure that everything's zeroed out. And it looks like the carryover that we've had through the years and the projects that came in slightly under budget, when you look at all of that, the number that we've got that we can work from is about $290,000 or so. We have to take a look at what those projects are and then also the cost of doing a new cooling tower versus the repair work, whatever that term is, and then come back with some ideas of what we need to do moving forward.
But our thoughts were those items that we had set aside would be moved to the front of the list to be taken about.
Yeah.
That's the way I wanted to approach it. Now, how many other?
Four of them.
And at our next meeting, are you going to update us on the entryways and where we stand on those?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. That was my first day back, so we'll have it all back together.
You're supposed to have it all.
And that's why I also didn't have all of them, because I remember we'd already talked about having the back orders on those at the end of January.
Yes, that's right. The door's still to hold up. They've got a lot of materials on hand, but.
Since the order date.
It would be closer to getting the excellent delivery date by then too.
Thank you.
All right. Just don't be doing too many dances and stuff with that leg that is. Thanks, Dan. Coogler Field, Mark's on, I believe you have something to say to us about that?
I do. The, as you may remember in the past, even though Coogler Field is under our care, the city of Washington and the Washington Youth Football League kind of split time in terms of taking care of all the mowing and ants and other related activities, maintenance of the field and also taking care of utilities and things like that. And then last year was the first year that the city of Washington bowed out and said they no longer thanks but no thanks. So we split the time with Washington Youth Football League. So we find ourselves again in that position this year. Our maintenance staff has winterized the building. There, if you've been to Coogler Field lately, you notice that there are fences up. Some of them were down for some repairs, but they're all up. Fences are locked, there are no trespassing signs. We do still have a couple of soccer goals there because of my understanding, Washington High School would like to do some practice there in the spring, but we've turned off, we haven't turned off the electricity. I mean, nobody's using the lights, the lights are padlocked, but we haven't stopped the service because it's just easier to not use it than it is to pay the fee with the city. Same with the water. We winterized the bathrooms, we've locked the doors. We, come spring when Washington wants to go down there or any other school for that matter, but my guess is it'll be Washington since they're closest to use the fields, we do need to extend our contract with our landscaping company to cover the mowing, taking care of the grounds, et cetera. And to be honest with you, for the foreseeable future, you know, instead of me coming to you each year to say this, because this last year was kind of the first time, I think, unless someone, something happens, I think Coogler half the year will be ours to take care of. It would just be something we include in the landscaping contracts going forward, much like I would assume, assuming that continues down the road. So the price for Coogler is going to be additional $3,120, excuse me, $3,120 to mow Coogler, take care of ants, et cetera, field maintenance for the spring.
So that's what you're asking us just to consider that part?
And will, and your approval to add it to our contract.
Right.
Okay. Has anybody been using it recently in an official capacity? Is it just when I ride by there, volunteers? I mean, just people walking on?
Yeah, I mean.
I see a lot of people out there.
Officially, to my knowledge, none of the schools are using it. I mean, we left, I shouldn't say we, but the folks at Washington left a couple soccer goals down there because they were tired of moving it back and forth. Last spring they were doing practices and summer conditioning there, but beyond that, I don't know of anybody officially using it. Unofficially, I think, depending on when you go by there, sometimes there are events going on that are out of our control.
Yeah. I think that's all I see. I'm just curious. I just see people out there. And I didn't think it was any particular school or anything. So, well, you're asking for a motion to approve the 3120 to add to our regular contract, so we'll be covered for those parts of the year. Okay, any questions for Mark about that? If not, what's the collection?
Move approval.
Second. Okay, motion, second. Last questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to that? Okay. Thank you. One that always has comments, calendar.
If you open that attachment, you actually see two. You see the traditional calendar, which is your first attachment, and then the second is the early college calendar. If we can look at the traditional calendar, then you'll notice the traditional one because it has the purple dates that start on the 21st of August. I want to bring a couple of things to your attention, and we shared this with the calendar committee. Calendar committee is made up of parent representatives. We have classified, certified staff members, administrators, teachers. And what we want to do is to try to get as much input on the calendar as we possibly can. And I don't ever want to go into the meeting and say, you know, I've worked on a calendar and you all agree that it's a good calendar, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down. What I try to do is to explain to them, because of the limitations that we're under with the work of the General Assembly, which really has hemmed us in the last two years on calendar, this is another year where we've got some issues. And the problem is that we're not allowed to start by law until the Monday closest to August the 26th. And you see that that's on August the 28th. Because of where the dates fall, we lose a couple of dates on weekends. And then we have to end the school year no later than June, or the Monday closest to June the 11th. And the Friday closest to June the 11th. And the Friday closest to June the 11th this coming year is June the 8th. So we can't use the 9th or 10th as school days because they fall on weekends as well. And then by law, we have to have, this is for 10-month employees, we have to have 215 days in the calendar paydays. We have to have the same number of state holidays that state employees get, which would be 11. We have to have 185 instructional days or 1,025 instructional hours. We have to have 10 annual leave days. When you take all of that and start to subtract out where they require us to start and where they require us to end, in this year's calendar, there was only room for four teacher work days in the entire calendar from beginning to end. And a couple of things we try to do, we try to make sure that there's not a tremendously long run from one month to the next. We try to have some things broken up. For that, we, everybody needs a break at some point in time. We try to build that in. We also know that we are inclined to have some inclement weather that we deal with. Sometimes for us, more in the fall than we do in the winter. So if you take a look at the calendar, when Lisa and I put this together, we tried to do it in a way that would be a little bit more user friendly. There's some color codes. Everything in red is a holiday. That's a state holiday that we're following. The two light blues are the beginning and ending of the school year. The purple is a required workday. The green is an optional teacher workday, which means if teachers have accumulated leave, they can take them on those days. The law also says that the local Board of Education shall designate two workdays during the year as days that teacher can take, teachers can take annual leave. We built more than that in. You could do all of them if you wanted to, but our principals feel like we need to have required days at the beginning of the year. And then that Friday would be that first optional workday and then students return on Monday. Then you have a holiday for Labor Day and then we're in dire need of professional development. But we don't have teacher workdays that we can get professional development days on. So the best we can do are early release days. So all the gray days that you see are early release days. And we've got two early release days in the first semester, which will be in the fall and the early part of the winter, would be for professional development. And then we've got two early release days in the winter and moving into the spring for professional development. And then the other gray days, the 31st would be the end of the first nine weeks. And because we can't put a teacher workday in because we don't have enough days in the calendar to do that, that will be an early release day to allow teachers to do some things they need to do. Veterans Day, I've shared with you before, is the only day written in state law that we can't have school. So we always have Veterans Day off and you see that on November the 10th. And then because we had 10 annual leave days, we used, we put one in front of, the one thing that we've always been asked by the folks that have given us feedback on the calendar is to preserve the Wednesday before Thanksgiving for travel. And in the past, that's normally been a teacher workday, but because we had 10 annual leave days that we needed to use, we put an annual leave day there so teachers will have that Wednesday off without having to take, they don't have to take leave. What that means then is that we've got nine more annual leave days to sprinkle throughout the year. If you look down to April, we're observing good, the holiday for Easter would be on Monday, Easter Monday, and then four annual leave days, so that would be our spring break or Easter break. So if you take that and add it to the annual leave day in November, that leaves us with five more that we have to put in. So we put those in the Christmas break. The holiday, state holidays will be the 25th through the 27th. And then we have annual leave days in the days that you see in yellow. And the 19th will be an early release day. So like they did this year, students would go on Monday and then early release on Tuesday to start their break. The difference that we have would be January, this year we went back to school on the day that most folks were observing New Year's Day. Because New Year's Day fell on a Sunday and we observed it on the last, the Friday of the week prior to that. This year, if you take a look at it, New Year's Day is on a Monday and then we are observing our holiday on the Monday like everyone else is, and then we'd be back to school on the 2nd. So even though we went back to school the 2nd this year, it's not the same as last year because of where the holidays fell. Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day is the 15th. And then the semester ends, and that's important, not just the grading period, but the semester for high school ends on Monday, the 22nd. We've tried to give two days back to back. We just can't do that in the calendar this year because we only have four to work with. And again, we're trying to break up long months, so we put an optional teacher workday in February. We put an optional teacher workday in March, again, to try to break that up. But we know that we probably will wind up having to pick one or two of those days up for weather makeup days, but we built those in so that you see that. And then we gave the Good Friday as an early release day, number one, because it's the end of the grading period the day prior and that allows teachers to do some cleanup work and get ready for the final grading period. But also it's the Good Friday, the Friday before the break. Now, I want to tell you a couple of comments that we've had from individuals. We had several folks that wanted to know if we could do the two days in January. And we could do that, but what I'm telling everyone, if we add a workday in January on the 24th, you can only do that by taking it away somewhere else. There's not, it's not possible to add another workday into the instructional calendar. And the other request that I heard more than anything else was, would it be possible to flip the 9th and the 30th of March? And what teachers would like to have would be a workday prior to the long vacation that we have for spring break. And our thought is that we need that day earlier in March just because we may have some issues with inclement weather. But if we push it all the way to the 30th of March, then we've got that another long stretch of time from the middle of February until we get to the end of March. So we had some folks that gave me feedback. Some folks said that it was obvious a lot of work had gone into the calendar and they appreciated it. Everyone responded, they appreciated having the ability to offer suggestions. But I'm being really honest with you, there are not a lot of room to do anything other than what you see right here. So again, if you, if you take a day and you want to add anything, it can only be done by removing a day somewhere else. The only way to add a teacher workday in the calendar would have been to take an annual leave day and put it before or after school starts. We've never done that and I don't want to get in that practice because what that does is it winds up shortening, shortening our spring break or our Christmas break. And we try to preserve that as much as we can. But if you take a look at that, what you have at the end of the school year, you have Memorial Day on the 30th, the state holiday. The school would end on the 8th, which is why it's in light blue and it's bold with a line through the number because that's the end of the grading period. And then the next three days would be required workdays and then the last two days would be optional workdays. Again, teachers could work then, but that would be day 214 and day 215 of the paid days that they have. So like you take a look at that and then while you've got that on your mind, if you'll open the other document out, it's the proposed calendar. This calendar, the early colleges, is my personal preference of where we would be if we could get legislation to allow us to start the school year when we feel like it needs to be started. And I would never advocate that everyone around the state has to do the same thing, but if they would give local control to the LEAs to be able to determine what's best for us, starting in early August allows the semester to end that Christmas break. So we're more on the calendar with the colleges and the universities and the community college as well, which would be very much a great advantage to us. Their calendar has a fewer number of required days at the beginning. They have the same state holidays that we do. Their annual leave days are broken down like ours are. The significant difference that you see is that they're operating on, we're operating on 1,025 instructional hours. They have more instructional days in their calendar and they end sooner, obviously, or they end earlier, as you see on the calendar, on the 22nd of May. But they're able to get their requirements in, they're on par with the community college, which they need to be because of the schedule that they're on. So we've always adopted different calendars for those two and we're just bringing these to you for your consideration. Again, it's been out for folks to give us feedback. I'm sure there'll be some folks that have other comments and if there's something that comes up that's a major change that needs to be made, we'll bring it to you. And if we were to have good fortune and the General Assembly were to give us local control, we likely would come back to you and ask you to take a look at the traditional calendar. But at this point, that hasn't happened and we can't wait any longer. We need to move forward.
I can actually look at this year's calendar a little bit better and understand what we're looking at.
I hope so. And this will be on one sheet of paper. There'll also be contact information for the schools on the other and we'll send this to all the students to be able to take home, so parents will have that information.
Well, I know it's always a tough job to do this, so I move approval that we accept both.
The only feedback that I've had has been on the March days. I've had several teachers that have expressed that we could flip those, but just because of that being Good Friday, they would, if you, if that were optional, then they could have Good Friday off. they would, if you, if that were optional, then they could have Good Friday off. But that's, other than that, I haven't had any more feedback from faculties.
And again, that could be done, but if you do that, you're going a long run from the 19th of February to the 30th of March.
Right.
We just, we've tried to break that up.
Yeah.
And as early release, we tried to provide something there if we could for families.
Yeah.
Well, you addressed the issue that some of them had around Christmas. That restores a little more normal than what we would normally do. And that day before Thanksgiving, that was the other one I heard about. But when you have someone telling you when to start, when to end, and how far to go in between, doesn't leave you a lot of options.
A lot of room.
I heard a motion. Go ahead.
The only thing I was going to ask is, Dr. Phillips, some of the meetings that you've been in since the election is now over and done. Is there any traction about giving us local control back on the calendar?
We were asked earlier in the year to go all the way back to 2003 and indicate what our start and end times were, and there was, at least we were, we had some folks listening to us in the General Assembly. Whether that translates into any action this year, I don't know.
We'll probably hear it again next election.
We're working on that. It's another one of the initiatives that we want to push, but I mean, those people can be there, so.
Yes. I hope I'm wrong.
And we have a meeting that Terry and I will be attending on Saturday, and that's going to be one of the issues that I'm going to ask for them to consider.
Please do.
So if they consider it, would you entertain, even though we will have approved this tonight, if the votes approve it, would you entertain coming back to us?
I would want to come back to you and give you a look at what that calendar would look like and then ask you to consider it. It's a tremendous advantage.
So we could make changes then?
Yes. The problem that we get, and I honestly get phone calls in the summer with folks that are getting ready to leave a place that they rented or something they're doing for vacation, and they'll call me and they'll say, do you know if the schedule's going to change any next year because I've got a summer rental and I need to go ahead and book it now for next year? So I understand that is an important thing, too. My guess is if anything changes, it will be too quick for us to do anything for the upcoming year, but if it does, I want to come back to you and let you know what it looks like. So that's why I've said I'm asking for approval here, but if something changes at the state level, then I may be coming back to you for an amended calendar if we have that opportunity.
Okay. I know I've heard a motion. Did I get a second over there?
Yeah.
Got a second over here. Any last questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to this? It's a job I wouldn't want to have to try to fit together. I'm not sure how to do it.
I don't like this.
Mr. Chairman, did I understand that Superintendent and Lisa did this?
He's, I heard him say that.
I know years ago, we used to have a committee, and that was like a committee of 15, and that's...
We had a committee, but we actually put it on paper. The committee was here, it was about 20 or 25 members strong.
And I know they actually sent that out evidently because I've had some people in the past that, I won't say complained, but questioned me about it. So this year, I saw them recently, and I said, did you give a look at their calendar? I said, I saw it was coming up. And they said, yes, we did. I thought, okay. So when you decide to tell me later you don't like it, I'll say, remember, you told me you looked at it.
That's right. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go to closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A1 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C-321.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to go into closed session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
We're in closed session, but...
Okay. We're back in open session, and the first item of business is to approve personnel agenda that we just, okay, we just went over. Going to hear a motion?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, and...
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself from my three of the, what we're going to vote on.
On the two of ours, but yes, right. Really, I noted that. Okay, all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed?
Thank you, Mike.
And calendar for January, February, which we're halfway through again.
If you take a look, we have the 26th of January is our second part of our board retreat. We're going to follow up with some things as we go into our budget work. They want to make sure that you're well aware of. And then we have February 7th is our normal first of the month board meeting, our work session at 5:00, and then the 21st is our regular monthly meeting at the end at 5:30. We may need to add a budget workshop in there, just depending on how quickly we get information and what we can do, but we'll work with you on that by early February. But right now, we have no information on planning allotments or anything else on the local current expense, so we're going to put some things together on the capital side.
Okay. Board member updates? Superintendent updates?
Yeah, I want to share, we have a blood drive scheduled here, Wednesday, February the 1st, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. You'll be here in the building at Central Services. I'd like to invite anybody to come out who'd like to be a part of that and donate. We certainly can use that in our community. And then a couple of other things I want to share with our board. I handed out a document from Rod Malone from Tharrington Smith, and this is in reference to a court decision that was made by Judge Donald Stevens, recently granted a motion made in the Bertie County Board of Education versus Janet Cowell. Why is that important to us? We're one of the parties in that, and at issue was a payment for improper equipment fees, and these were fees that had not been turned back over to LEAs as they should have been. And once a copy of the exhibit from the states received, then the LEAs will all be aware of how much money they would receive. These are not fees that come from the local municipalities. They're actually charged and received by the state. So I just wanted you to be aware that that court case had been taken care of, and then there'll be some forthcoming information. And I've had a couple of folks ask about graduation times. You all may recall that we're going to do all of our graduations with the exception of early college on January, on Saturday, June the 10th.
You wish.
And what this is going to involve is several, obviously, graduations going on the same day, but we'll get them all taken care of, and we felt like a Saturday graduation would allow more families to participate. But our schedule is Washington High School at 8:30. We're doing that because of the heat that's all around in June, they can get theirs done outside and be able to take care of that. Ed Tech would be at 11:00 at the community college like it normally is. We go from Ed Tech to Northside at 1:00, and then Southside at 3:30, and we'd have four of those graduations will be wrapped up all in one day. So it'll be a busy day for those of us that are going to go to all of those, and we encourage you to go to as many as you can, but our students and the families love to see board members there, and we love to have you there as well, and just wanted you to have those dates. Again, Washington, 8:30, Ed Tech at 11, Northside High School at 1, and Southside at 3:30.
Okay. Anything else? Thanks for your time, and?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Got a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.